Oh, I think it's the best. Real Mexican, among other things, they make absolutely.
You know, Carl Sagan beer.
Oh, okay, I thought he was.
They're all homemade.
Oh.
Really good and they make up.
Oh, sorry.
I saw that, but when I saw the tag, I thought maybe.
It's a huge. They seem to be doing real well. It's generally a lot of customers, they make a really good breakfast.
Yeah, we get back maybe this week more minutes.
Yeah, they make real good chorizo and eggs.
I saw a picture. We'll get Bob a couple more minutes.
So these years will pass.
But yeah, having a good Mexican grocery out here would be nice. So I usually end up going to that one. Cedar on out of town, north of town. Which is really good. Particularly if you're looking for like, yeah. They've got several different custom homemade chili powders. Just about any spice and herb that you whatever. Making Mexican food, it's really good and a really good meat department. Make their own homemade chorizo. There is no Handys, Handys is where I still go to Handys for some things. No, this one is right on Cedar heading north out of town on the east side. It's actually a supermarket, it's pretty good sized.
So not, not candy size.
Right. Yeah, the only time I have with Handy is going in and I'm not getting something off their deli counter. Their food is so good.
I've heard that too.
But yeah, they have one that they have the best fresh chorizo in town, they bring it up from Chicago every day. And it's the only place I know that consistently has Napolitos. They're, Napolitos are a sweet Mexican cactus. And I do use them when I make my.
Right, which will call the meeting to order. For Monday, April twenty second, we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. McConnell, if you would lead us.
A pledge of allegiance is my pledge of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will have roll call, Mr. McConnell, please.
Yes, um, members White, sir.
Present.
Member Medow.
Here.
Member Mudry.
Present.
Kozinski.
Present.
Member Elzinga.
Present.
Member Bradley.
Here.
Speaker McCombs, present. Vice Chair Hunt Proctor.
Present.
And Sheriff Wyandell Jackson. We have a call.
All right, thank you. Next we have approval of the agenda.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other conversation, additions, corrections? There being none, we entertain a voice vote, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I hope that we approve the minutes of the April eighth, two thousand twenty four planning commission regular meeting. Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Concerns or questions? Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Correspondence, there is none before us today. May I add one additional for you? Nope, it's no old business, public hearings, Mr. McConnell.
We have case number PSL twenty twenty four dash oh two. Special land use permit request for an amendment to an existing place of worship for Rivers Edge Community Church. Located at one point four oh six Broadbent Road in Lansing.
All right, thank you.
Yep, one second. So before the planning commission today, uh, Rivers Edge Church is coming for two things. One is site plan review for a new building and the other is for amendment of the existing, uh, special land use permit, uh, for a place of worship. Uh, the first was approved prior to the twenty seventeen, um, zoning ordinance, um, uh, change, so, um, there are some deficiencies based on that, which we can discuss and, um, review of the site. Uh, so going from the beginning, uh, land is owned AG two agricultural residential, uh, which is kind of a holdout of, um, days gone past, it's not necessarily, you know, I would say representative of the area, um, anymore. However, the zoning, um, is in place and it does allow for, uh, places of worship, so, um, they're fine there. With front setbacks, we have our standards and the proposed, the building is going to be, uh, placed towards the east and south part of the existing building, um, with a proposed parking lot that's going to wrap around on the east side of the building. Uh, the height's going to be proposed about twenty-three feet, uh, the construction is kind of, um, pole barn style, I would say, based on the architectural drawings. Presently, the parcel is five point eight acres in size. They are going to, uh, split off, um, and create a vacant parcel for future use. Um, so after approvals, they will have a smaller parcel, but it'll still be bigger than two acres. The lot frontage is a hundred and sixty-five is required, they're proposing two hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, lot coverage is ten percent and they're proposing eight percent, so there's still, um, a little bit more room for future buildings under the current zoning district. Um, another mechanism may be for rezoning of the property if they wanted to expand larger, because there are, um, coverage allowances that are greater than ten percent in other zoning districts, like a non-just district, which, which might make sense in, in the future. Uh, public improvements. So the properties already connected to utilities, um, township engineering, the utility department had reviewed the site plan and, um, provided comments, uh, which, uh, I believe we can get to you if you'd like, they were quite ready, um, Friday afternoon when we sent packets out. Uh, vehicle access, the main access point is off the Broadbent Road, curb cut, it's existing. They are proposing a southern future cross connection through what will likely be Delta Crossing's, uh, phase three apartments when that comes back into play, um, as I have said in the note that that site plan, um, has expired. So we're gonna have to start fresh, which gives us the opportunity to, um, get some more cross connection between sites, which I personally think is never a bad thing. Going into vehicle parking, they're proposing, um, seventy-eight new spaces, um, for a total of a hundred and ninety-two spaces. No discrepancy, um, um, the site plans were, uh, initially set five eighteen on C one. Um, and then on A dash two, it says four seventy-one. Um, regardless of which, basically that number is just what determines what the parking count is, but places of worship can go above and beyond, um, if, if they'd like, so it's, you know, it's really kind of a, um, point within determining, um, you know, the appropriate parking. Um, this will require bicycle parking and so up to a rack for ten bicycles. This next part I added, um, I'd like to try to at least promote pre-planning for, uh, electrical vehicle parking, um, as it is, something that is, you know, gonna be a lot more commonplace in the next ten to fifteen years, so, you know, just putting it out there that they can take it for what they want. It's, you know, I'm not saying that it's a standard required requirement, but, you know, perhaps they could do some forward thinking and design the spot that could easily be transitioned into electric vehicle parking at a later date. Um, bringing up the SLU requirements, the special land use permit directs the applicant to update the entire site to modern standards, meaning the existing western parking lot must be retrofitted with curbing pedestrian access and landscaping. Uh, photometric plan, uh, the proposed photometric plan was kind of deficient, it only showed parts of, of the site. We really are looking for, um, the complete site, so it's something that they're going to have to come back to the table with. Uh, landscape requirements, also they're a bit deficient, um, so, you know, I just went ahead and listed what was required and what we can anticipate to see in, in future revisions. Uh, sidewalks, so Broadbent is in the non-motorist plan as a pathway, so it's gonna be a ten-foot sidewalk along Broadbent, which they have proposed, um, along that portion. So going into the standards of review, we were able to find that they can meet all the, the standards except for, uh, site access. So this one talks about, uh, pedestrian circulation and says pedestrian facilities have not been proposed, but shall be a requirement of approval. Um, typically, you know, for all modern development require a safe access or sidewalk to get people from the road right of way to basically the front door, um, for all new developments. Um, and number seven is site planning and design of specific improvements will accomplish the preservation and protection of existing natural resources and features to the extent reasonably possible, um, so it's another deficiency in the site plan, they didn't do a tree survey, which is, is a requirement, uh, so just another part that they'd have to supply. Um, and, you know, if any of the existing trees are able to be counted towards greenbelt landscaping, then we'll be able to count those. We do, I mean, uh, drive by, it's predominantly at green along Broadbent, so, uh, they will need to, uh, plant some deciduous likely. Uh, we just have not received, uh, any comments from the drain office, uh, it's my understanding that that whole corner or, um, Broadbent Saginaw area drains north in existing ponds, I don't anticipate, um, you know, any issues, um, regarding drainage and for this review. Uh, again, just a noted deficiency in the site plan for landscaping. Uh, so this is the special land use review, um, so all of these are, you know, based off what we require. These are the, uh, specific standards, all of them were, uh, able to be met, um, fairly easily and, you know, it is an existing church and has been for quite some time, um, township has never really received any, um, complaints regarding, uh, the land use at the property. Going forward into our general standards, you know, nothing really to note, um, that I have a couple of recommendations. So this is two applications and I just combined it in, uh, one staff report, because it, it just made sense to do, to talk about them both at the same time. Um, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, David. The, um, Carlson Road extension cut, cut in, now that won't have to be revisited later when that road becomes reality?
Uh, well, they're just preparing for basically Delta, so the, the connection will be made when Delta Crossings gets, um, constructed. So they're just preparing for a connection by pre-planning for it with, you know, curb cut, there, there won't be parking there.
Right, but they won't have to come here?
No.
Okay. And the, uh, to be determined deficiencies, these aren't showstoppers?
No.
These are, these are just, they have to be done.
Yeah, it's, you know, typically when, uh, we receive a site plan, there's usually two or three revisions, um, that happen from going back and forth.
Now, the electric vehicle comment in there, um, being a person that's had three electric vehicles, um, those, having those available are a moneymaker for the property owner. Okay, so. That's it, Madam Chair.
All right, yes.
David, uh, drawing C three. There's, uh, area to the east that is on the drawing is, is in red, circle in red. They're down.
Oh, great, this is the.
Or, uh, sorry, the, uh. There we go. Oh, it's a circle in red, what is? What is the purpose of that?
Uh, it's the, they have a little note here that says it's the approximate, uh, clearing limits for the brush that's back there.
All those trees are coming out?
Yeah, this is where the new parking would be.
Okay.
So you can see this dashed line.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Good question. Any written comments from the authorizer? Matt? All right. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good, I'm Sean Bates with Dan Voss Instruction, um, civil engineer on the project, um, here on behalf of, uh, Representatives Community Church and I have representatives here as well from the church. Um, you know, excited about the project and, um, you know, here to answer any questions. Um, but I think David did a great job summarizing and we've had a lot of back and forth, um, communication. As you want, I just let you guys know, we have been working close with the Eaton County Drain Commission, um, you know, moving into permits, you know, obviously with this being special use in the site plan review, we certainly wanted to get staff feedback, um, you know, before everything's final at that stage, so, um, yeah, I wanted to let you know, we are on track in that regard and, um, in alignment with the drain commission, so I do, do expect comments from them very soon. Um, this requires a sort of road control permit and a stormwater impact, um, permit as well. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, one, one note on the, on the clearing, um, and this is something we've planned incorporating um, in our response back to the township to, um, clear out any deficiencies, um, but we will have that parking lot shifted slightly to the west. Um, it's even, even more kind of in compliance being offset from the property line, but, uh, we do have, um, some wetlands along that property line that we had officially delineated after, um, we submitted, so I just wanna let the planning commission know um, that we have addressed that and, um, in working with BGLE in the county, um, have, um, fallen into, into compliance and steering clear of any environmental impacts to that, that area. Yeah, other than that, happy to answer any, any questions you guys have.
Do you have any problems at all with all, any stipulations that, uh, that David pointed out?
Um, so the, you know, the, the retrofit, um, comments, we certainly wanna, um, you know, we, we understand uh, the initiative and wanting to bring the whole site up to compliance, uh, we, we do have a couple of concerns, you know, with placing curb and gutter on the north side of that existing parking lot. Um, just given the way it was designed originally, uh, I do see some challenges with making that work, um, but that's something we haven't, we haven't, uh, you know, dove into yet, so, um, it just, you know, when you, when you say retrofit, it sounds simple, but there are some, you know, design considerations there and I just ask that there's some discretion from the township in that and I think that's something that we can, you know, work through and, um, as we kind of take this next step.
Yeah, like I spoke to you on the phone, I would need a variance.
Yeah.
Yeah, one quick question, Dave, on the east side of that property, when it ultimately gets built, that'll butt up to the residential part of?
Delta Crossing.
Delta Crossing, correct?
Correct.
Uh, so how much clearance do we have between the built up areas here and what? The best guess that we have on the residential, I just want to make sure that when that residential goes in, we are button up against one another.
Um, I would say probably about seventy to a hundred feet from the edge of the parking lot to the pro, I'm trying to recall what the design was and I think.
Right, yeah, I don't remember.
I think they pushed, you know, yeah.
Is that the development to the south or to the east?
Uh, well, Delta Crossing's phase three would wrap around.
Okay.
Your, your south and east property.
Okay, yeah, and off the east property line where, um, yeah, well beyond the, the requirement there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When they, when Delta Crossings goes in, they would, they're going to have to construct a, uh, a buffer and a berm.
Any other problems, questions, commissioners? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing, if there's nothing else?
Is anybody in the audience wish to speak?
Anyone in the audience would like to speak? There being none, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. We don't need to vote, correct? We do?
We do.
Okay, we need to vote. All those in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Pleasure of the commissioners.
Madam Chair. And I, I would like to point out, I did talk to, uh, uh, resident to the north, um, of the church today. Um, we read the, the site plan, his only concern, uh, was some glare, um, from the parking lot, which I assured him that we would be able to take care of, um, given the photometric requirements.
Thank you. Mr. McConnell. Pleasure of the commissioners.
Prepare to make a motion.
All right.
The, uh, following motion is offered for the planning. Uh, I'm sorry, I move that the Delta Township Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan for the proposed River, Rivers Edge Church expansion is illustrated on site plans prepared by Dan Voss Construction dated three twenty-two twenty-four, subject to the following stipulations, and there are five.
Support.
Okay, it's moved and supported. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we got a roll call on this.
Roll call, okay, roll call vote, Mr. McConnell.
Okay, members White, sir.
Support.
Medow.
Support.
Mudry.
Support.
Kozinski.
Support.
Elzinga.
Support.
Bradley.
Support.
McConnell supports, Hunt Proctor.
Support.
And Wyandell was absent, so we, the motion carries.
Twenty-four oh three, Mr. McConnell.
A follow-up with a motion. Um, I hope that the Delta Township Planning Commission recommend approval of PSL twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash triple zero two to the township board for the Rivers Edge Special Land Use Permit for a place of worship located on PPN zero four zero dash zero zero nine, dash three hundred, dash zero two six, dash zero zero. The following reasons, which are four, and they're subject to two stipulations. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other comments, questions, concerns? The written and written will entertain a voice vote.
No, it's, yeah, it's poison.
It's still, still, um, yeah, okay. Member Switzer.
Support.
Medow.
Support.
Mudry.
Support.
Kozinski.
Support.
Elzinga.
Support.
Bradley.
Support.
McConnell supports, Hunt Proctor.
Support.
And Wyandell was absent. Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Mr. McConnell.
Okay. Madam Chair, we have case number PSL twenty twenty-four dash oh three. Special land use permit request for motor vehicle leasing and renting business for Johnson Enterprises LLC located at twenty-eight eighty-eight South Christ Road in Lansing.
Great, thank you. Matt.
Okay. All right, so we have a special land use permit for twenty-eight eighty-eight South Christ for vehicle sales and leasing facility. Uh, it's going to be for herd rentals, uh, going to be industrial and construction equipment. Uh, so only major change to the actual site is going to be fencing around the perimeter, uh, let's see here. Fencing around the perimeter, uh, here, uh, property is located in a large contiguous industrial areas, there's no, a lot of the questions for the special land use permit pertain to residential uses adjoining the property, but there's, uh, no residential property anywhere near the property. Uh, another concern for these types of uses is, uh, traffic, this is located in a extremely low pedestrian area and, and fairly low for, uh, traffic as well, kind of, uh, all the traffic would be sort of, uh, targeted towards the site, not allowed drive-by traffic there. Let me pull up the, uh, site plan here. All right, so, uh, like I said, the only, uh, made, the only change would be basically like, uh, fencing around the outside, as you can see, there's gonna be, uh, equipment staging on the north side and the southeast part of the property, uh, at least twenty feet off of property lines in accordance with the standards. Uh, no, uh, maintenance of the site, uh, as per the standards. Only, uh, sort of issue that kind of came up, uh, says that no equipment staging can happen on grass, uh, then the applicant statement says that they wish to do that, uh, in the past, we have done, uh, variances for that sort of thing, but it would require variance from the ZBA to, to maintain that standard. Uh, that can be done separate from this process, you, you can approve it subject to that condition. Uh, other than that, I can't, can't come up with any real big issues with it, there's gonna be gates on both, both, uh, property lines here. Um, otherwise, the applicant's here to answer any questions and I am as well, I'll look up to the planning commission for questions.
Question?
This is the applicant here.
Should be, yep.
Come to the podium, please. Name and address for the record.
Hey, good afternoon, my name is Tim Dudley, I am representative of Johnson's Enterprises and my address is fifty-five, uh, Campow Avenue Northwest, Suite three hundred, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five zero three.
Uh, under compatibility with comprehensive plan, you have many different, uh, products or industries that you're. Listing here, are you intend to service all of those that are listed there?
Uh, well, I, I'm not able to answer that question, I do have a representative of Herc Rentals here and I'll let him answer the question, uh, himself.
Okay.
Eric Lo, I'm with Herc Rentals, I live about a nineteen hundred Snitaker Road, Williamson, Michigan. So Herc Grounds, um, it's a full rental business, we do everything from residential homeowners, so. Drain snakes all the way up to general contractors and dealing with material handling, aerial lifts, A W P, um, things of that nature. So as far as servicing the whole product line, it's just the equipment that assets that we own and would rent out.
So you would have all, it's all the equipment that you have on, on site?
Correct, correct.
But you, but you won't be hitting all these categories then or not?
Um, yeah, we will be hitting all the categories as far as what's on there in the list that we offering, because we offer them to our customers, so we carry them as well.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
After.
Yes.
Uh, according to, um. Stipulation G. The applicant has indicated that there will be no repair or maintenance activities associated with the business. So we're in the business of selling the equipment, releasing the equipment, but you're not going to be maintaining.
Correct. I understand that there will be some washing of equipment and fueling.
I don't consider that maintenance.
Right.
Oil changes, tire changes, uh, overhauling of motors, that kind of stuff, none of that's going to happen.
So. So in our industry, like the overhauling of motors, we typically, our fleet stays new. So inside of three years, everything gets sold off at, through, whether it's our customer base or we send it to an auction house to get sold off. Because the A N Z standards on this equipment, because there's a lot of safety components. Get phased out so frequently, we keep our fleet new within three years. So as far as like motor issues, we take them to the actual manufacturer to deal with, because our fleet stays inside of that warranty. But your oil changes, like, we bring equipment back from a job site, there's a certain, um. There's a certain stage of events that have to happen to get that rental check to send back out, so we have to run it through all its motion tests. Um, make sure it's inside a certain amount of hours for service or annual inspections, just to adhere to like A N Z standards and OSHA standards. So it's basically, we call it a rental check, but it's like, uh, you know, if you buy a car, it goes through a sixty point inspection, it's kind of along those same lines. We bring it in, function test it, make sure all the safety functions work, engine serviced, and then essentially wash it, get it ready for the next customer.
So if you find anything deficient or wrong, you ship it out?
Yeah, if, yeah, yeah, like if an engine's going bad, we take it right back to manufacturer, because they're kept within warranty and say, this is your, you know, baby to deal with. If it's something inside of a tire or oil change, we do that as our, our mechanics take care of that.
So you do do some maintenance?
Some maintenance, yes.
So.
But we're not, we're not a for hire, you can't break this just for our fleet.
Right. So. Matt, it says there's no maintenance being done, but obviously there, there is some.
Right, um.
But in, in an industrial zone.
Uh, yeah, I would say that kind of falls in that, yeah, sort of gray area where, yeah, I would think I, that would count as just sort of, yeah, general maintenance. And that would, that would be fine with, with the special land use permit, I think, as long as, as long as now it's acknowledged on the record that.
I'm just trying to get the.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Very good, I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, anyone else from the public wish to speak at this time? One wants, going twice. Alright, commissioners?
Moving to close the public hearing.
Support.
They're moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, the eyes have it, thank you very much. Commissioners.
Next, uh, if I can make a motion. It's, okay. Um, I move that the planning commission recom- recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval. I'm sorry. Board of Trustees approval, yeah, of special land use permit for vehicle sales, leasing and service facility. And outdoor storage as requested by Johnston Enterprises LLC. As described in case number P S L dash two zero two four dash zero three. For the following reasons, in which there are three, with the following conditions of approval, of which there are two listed.
Any other questions or comments?
Support.
Been supported. Mister McConnell.
Member Switzer.
Support.
Metow.
Support.
Mudry.
Support.
Kozinski.
Support.
Hosenka.
Support.
Bradley.
Support.
I will support. Hot Proctor.
Support.
And, uh, White though was absent, so we, motion carries.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's when we got it somewhere around here.
Final, final vote will be like, uh, probably next Monday night at the township board, um, so you guys are good to go if you need. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, is it, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we have case number. P S L twenty twenty-four dash oh four. Special land use permit for a vehicle repair station. For a proposed Jiffy Lube facility at forty-eight ten West Saginaw. Highway Lansing.
Right.
Alright, listeners.
Yeah, let me pull up the site here just a second.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, uh, so forty-eight ten, uh, West Saginaw, so it's going to be these, uh, two parcels here, the, the part, the main parcel and then this here. Uh, properties were actually combined on last Monday night, uh, which, so it's still in process, obviously. But, uh, these two are going to be one, one site for the purposes of this case. Uh, so, uh, existing entrance, uh, on Saginaw Highway is going to utilize that. Uh, going to construct a thirty-one hundred, uh, twenty square foot, uh, building, uh, for a Jiffy Lube oil change facility. Uh, traffic will enter off Saginaw Highway, round the corner here, and then back out. Uh, and around, kind of like your typical, uh, oil change facility. Uh. Property is going to be required to have, uh, landscaping on the northern property line, uh, it's kind of the most major issue. Uh, there's an existing, uh, privacy fence there, uh, but they're going to add a berm in accordance with our standards there. Uh, hours of the, of the proposed Jiffy Lube are eight to seven, uh, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturdays, and then, uh, ten to four, uh, Sundays. Uh. Partner, or the neighbor to the north kind of came in and talked to me, but he's actually here, so he might, uh, tell you this himself. I think, don't think we identified any major issues, kind of just didn't want any, uh, outdoor storage or just kind of garbage on the site. But the, the applicant really isn't proposing any outdoor storage, other than just kind of your typical, uh, uh, dumpster enclosure over here. Uh. Other than that, yeah, the property does, it's pretty thorough, the special land use permit application, I didn't really identify any major, uh, planning issues with it. So with that, I'll open it up to the, uh, planning commission for questions, the, uh, e- excel engineering, the, uh. Engineering company for the applicant is on Zoom currently, so we can unmute them and, uh, they can answer questions if you guys have them, or I, I'd be happy to as well.
Questions, comments?
The chair. Um, my question basically is de- dealing with, uh, the waste oil, where, where stored and, uh, how frequently has it picked up?
Then it would be all inside the building, but I will, uh, will, uh, ask the applicant to jump on here. Just wanted to do.
It wasn't clear, I was looking at the drawing.
Mister Derry there?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
We didn't see anything on it, I couldn't see it from the drawings, it wasn't clear. I haven't got that, maybe.
Can you guys hear me?
It may, because, yeah, he's unmuted right now.
Okay, okay.
He will step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jason Boeing with Googanheim Partners, uh, address is three thousand Internet Boulevard, Suite five seventy, Dallas, Texas, um, seven five zero three four. Um, in regards to oil storage, it is stored in the basement in a tank, um, that I believe is triple protected. Um, and then that gets emptied out, um, I believe it's once a month.
Enough capacity for, down there for, for that long?
Oh, yeah.
Jason with Excel, can you guys hear me? I, I can hear you.
Well, I may have misspoke on that, I think it's every two to three weeks, it depends on the capacity and how many, um, oil changes are actually occurring, which is about twenty at max a day.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a standard for that, or?
I can get those to you, I don't know off the top of my head. Jason, with Excel, Jason Day, he may be able to explain that a little bit better.
Sorry, I mean, last, last night I just unmuted and.
Okay. Gee, it's no wonder.
Out of the hundred or so that we've done, it's a standard across the board, across the nation, so, um, there is no risk of leak. Or anything like that, if that's what you're concerned about.
Does, uh, Eagle get involved in situation like this with?
I don't know. Like, I don't know that.
Jason Day with Excel, can you hear me?
Travel review during, um, site plan review. But as far as, you know, state standards, um, I'm not too familiar with that.
Jason Day with Excel, can you hear me?
The tanks are buried, they're just in the basement.
They're just in the basement. And when, but they're cleaned out, it goes through a, the hookup process for that is very secure.
I'm also on Zoom and can you hear you? I don't think they can.
Requirements that the state.
Requirements that state.
So it just dumped into one, one tank then?
Yes.
No matter what type of vehicle you get in.
Correct.
Okay. What else?
Anyone else?
Um, madam chair, just a question.
Mm-hmm.
Multi-care, it's identified, um. What are all the services that are provided beyond oil change?
Uh, so the main service is oil changes, we do not do anything like engine work, brakes, anything like that. I do believe we can do an alignment if need be, um, but it's usually very basic things such as windshield wipers or, uh, air filter changes. Um, I know there's a concern about outdoor storage, we do not store anything outside. Um, no tires, brake discs, anything like that. Cars are not usually, uh, left outside, they're always stored in the garage overnight. If somebody leaves it and wants to pick it up the next day.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from the public? If you would come to your podium, thank you, sir, and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm David Miller, seven fifteen Maycroft. Property adjacent to this property you're looking at. One of the main questions I have, several little questions, so. Says cars won't usually be left on the property for one thing. We've got a good case of kids that run around that area. When some of the other businesses went in, we had kids running up and down our fence line. I put up a six foot fence to block the view from, of Saginaw and all the kids going up and down the fence line. Kids, people. I don't know if I really need a facility like this, that's going to be driving cars in and around. To get an oil change. Or whatever they're going to do. As you know, some things are subject to changes, life goes on, we go from an oil change to. Lubrications to maybe a transmission change, and things are slow, we do a little more. And in coming in off of Saginaw, to me, we have enough driveways right there between Maycroft. And about two hundred feet of nothing but people coming in and out onto Saginaw. How busy Saginaw? Busy. You know that. I got sixty, seventy years of fire department, Lansing, Delta. And Saginaw is getting busy disastrous. Try to get pulled off on Maycroft, get onto Saginaw, is life threatening at times? Now we're putting up an oil change place, throw another car in. I just don't see in that little bit of a lot, putting up an oil change where we got traffic coming in and out. Is going to do Saginaw or the area, anything environmentally good. Um, just what to put up there? I really don't know. It's such a small lot. And the way it backs up to my property. And the people that we have living on Maycroft, which a lot of the traffic will come down Maycroft, off from Woodhull. Swing around, we got a bit of traffic on there now. But someplace like that, that's going to be changing oil, that means a little bit more traffic coming around the corner. It's one of those things you live with, it's changes, it's life. But I would just assume see something concrete with less traffic in that little space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rest of them.
Yes, please.
I also have Jason Day on speaker, he says everybody online can hear him, but for whatever reason.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But to address the, I guess the kids walking the fence line, establishing a business there will eliminate that because the kids aren't likely to go up on the property. As far as traffic counts, we are actually less than a Taco Bell or Starbucks or anything like that, we have about twenty cars a day. The only thing that would fit there is some sort of drive-through facility. And you'd be looking at eighty to ninety cars a day or something like that. In terms of privacy, do you want to say something, Jason? Go ahead.
I was gonna say you're looking during the peak hour, eating the ninety cars an hour for a quick serve.
Did y'all hear that?
Can you repeat what?
For a quick serve restaurant, or quick serve facility like a Starbucks or Taco Bell, you're looking eighty-nine, eighty to ninety cars per hour in peak times, whereas we have twenty-five cars for the entire day. In terms of privacy in the rear, we're happy to add more landscaping, add a higher berm, anything that would reduce the visibility. We have a lot less noise than any fast service restaurant where you would be hearing orders being taken all the time, we don't have bells or anything like that. Anything else you want to add, Jason?
Yeah, along with the quick serve as well, you've got the speaker and the outdoor discussions that happen that can get quite loud, which, you know, obviously will not be part of this type of development. So you're about as low impact as you can get as far as uses that are allowed in the slot, based on the size, you know, like Jason said, traffic's going to be minimal, we're not increasing the amount of driveways to this park, so there's one driveway currently that's utilized, and we're basically keeping the driveway in the same spot, we're reconstructing it to improve the geometry a little bit, but it's going to be in the same location. But big picture, this is going to be a pretty low impact commercial development in compared to other, other uses.
Very awkward to do via speakerphone.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other facilities where you have gone into other types of services, like the mentioned transmissions and stuff like that, there's is, just to alleviate his concern that he might run into other, other procedures?
No, we do not do that, Jiffy Lube is pretty much strictly oil changes in terms of car maintenance, they do what they call multi-care, which is windshield wipers and air filters, things like that. But no, we do not do engines, we do not do anything like that, we haven't in the hundred projects that we've opened.
You also do cooling system flushes, transition flushes?
No, nothing like that. And when I had mentioned cars being left out, that may happen once or twice a year, you know, where somebody just can't pick up their car after an oil change, it is very rare. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they are able to be stored in the bays to be secured. Because it's part of Jiffy Lube's liability to make sure that that car doesn't get broken into, so there will not be any cars sitting out there where it would create a temptation for anybody.
Really good care of their site and property from the standpoint of even, you know, from, from opening, you know, they want the appearance of the site to be clean and I'll use the word spectacular from the standpoint that they want good roadway appearance. You know, we've got quite a bit of landscaping in the front and all of the green areas, basically from the building towards the road will be sanded. So that all looks green from the time of, of opening, from the building to the north, that'll be seeded, we are proposing quite a bit of landscaping in that required thirty foot buffer to the north, as well as that burn that adventure with landscaping on top of that. And Jiffy Lube irrigates all of their properties, whether it's required by the city or not. So, like I said, they, they take very good care of, of their properties from an appearance standpoint, as well as providing those irrigation systems to make sure the landscaping thrives.
Yeah, just to add on to what Jason Day had said. Yeah, we pride ourselves in being a very clean facility, we're not sure, you know, typical sloppy oil change facility, we're our returns to business is based on a lot of, not only customer service, but the looks of our facilities and we keep them very clean. We have a whole team that will visit these to make sure that they are constantly up to our standards.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did the person on the phone identify themselves for the record?
They did, yeah.
Done, okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, would you step up to the microphone, please?
Come to the podium, please, and your name and address for the record.
I'm Linda Schebel, I'm at seven two five Maycroft, and we have, in back of us, we have Alberell Steel. Even, even with a, a lot of challenges with them, it's noisy. With the trash, with them moving things. We're, we're so close to all of this, we had, at one time, we had Discount Tire, not very far from there, which is now a foreign car facility. And that was murder. Murder, we heard every bit, even if, if you have that, it, it goes right through. And that, that's further away than what this facility is going to be. The other thing is, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, we have a bus stop right there. And people get on, they come across Maycroft. Not only that, we have St. Gerard Church. Our, our road once got wore out by their cars, sorry. But we still have that traffic and the children coming from that school, the buses and the parents, they have to come down Maycroft, make a right. And I can't see any more traffic, we wait and wait and wait, you're going to say, oh, you got Domino's there? Yes, we do, but they come out on Maycroft and they drive, really, they're good drivers and you know, for the deliveries and the people, I very rarely see them come out of Domino's, they go up Maycroft. And they're very good, I have no complaints about Domino's. And so this would add to our problem, and not only that, but you're talking about putting this berm up. Who's going to take care of that berm? We've seen businesses plant the stuff and never take care of it. We've been around the block, both Millers and myself, we've been there over fifty years. And we've seen a lot of change that's necessary, but all of this, that lot is so small that I just can't imagine having anything so close and so noisy and having oil and pollution and it just, it, it floors me. So that's all I have to say, but I, I just hope that this isn't a mistake for Delta Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
One of the first things we can address is a traffic count again, can you pull up the site plan, please? And Maycroft is to the east of us, correct?
Yep, Maycroft.
So as you can see here, we do not have any access onto Maycroft, there will not be any cars of ours, or customers of ours pulling in and out of that street. So hopefully that relieves any concern you have with Maycroft having to be repaved. In terms of the berm, if you want to set up a maintenance bond or agreement, we're happy to sign off on that to make sure that everything is kept up. We always do that, so that won't be an issue. In regards to the noise concern, the concerned resident had brought up the noise, compare the noise to a discount tire. Again, we have no air tools where you're going to hear tires being removed and replaced constantly. It is oil change, which is pretty silent, we do not have bells or anything that will be dinging. And our car count for that, again, is much less than a discount tire would be, and we are looking at twenty-five a day, twenty to twenty-five a day at max, much less on the weekends. What else? Again, at some point, this property will be developed, if it were to be a Starbucks or a Taco Bell or McDonald's, I would think that would be worse because as I said, you're looking at eighty to ninety cars at peak hours, you're hearing the blaring of the speakers where people are taking orders, and the traffic would be, you know, four to five times, if not more than what we have. And there'd probably be a packed parking lot, whereas ours, in terms of employees, we're only going to use two of those spaces. We'd probably take less if you would allow it, but. Yeah, I think that's it, any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Matt, we're talking about a thirty foot setback to the north, and we're talking about, what, six foot berm?
Yep.
Okay.
The setback, or the thirty foot wide is the width of the bu, the buffer, but yeah, I think the building itself is like ninety something feet away, but yeah, yep.
And we're talking about landscaping on top of that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I'll also add to, like, just from the, the applicant gave like a, an estimate from the ITE, which is the International Transportation Engineers, or Institute for Transportation Engineers, and it's basically expecting in the morning, like a peak of thirty-one trips, meaning basically fifteen-ish cars in and out, and at night, it's a peak of twenty-nine, so like roughly fourteen or fifteen-ish cars in and out in a peak hours, like, like you said, that would be a lot less than a, probably your average fast food restaurant.
You know, there is a Jiffy Lube by me, St. Joe and Waverly, and all the times I've traveled there, I've seen one vehicle pull in and maybe one vehicle pull out, there's just not a whole lot of traffic.
Right, and those numbers that I believe Jason Day gave you were, were peak. On our best performing stores, we do not usually hit those numbers.
You have a question? Anyone else on the podium wish to speak at this time? If you could step to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Marcel Miller, seven fifteen Maycroft. There is an oil change down next to is a Goodyear or Firestone off of off of Saginaw, off of, and I was just wondering, why do we need another oil change place if that one is just down off, right off of Elmwood? How busy are they? I think, I think it's, I think it's without.
We don't have that.
And I know in the morning, when I'm coming down Saginaw, they will have, basically, Amazon trucks will be pulling in there around seven, six, six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning for their oil change, and there's quite a few of those that are in line. That's, I was wondering why we needed another one.
Thank you. Yes, please.
In terms of why another oil change facility is needed, so when we look at these sites, we've spent about nine months looking at this one. Our real estate, we have a real estate team that goes and they look at projections, the projections of growth in the area, projections of what other businesses such as Valvoline may be doing in the area, and they're obviously a competitor of ours. And we will put together car counts, projected car counts, projected populations in, in, you know, the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And from, it's been a minute since I've looked at it, but from what I recall, the growth here is expected to grow seven to eight percent over the next ten years. And so we feel that because those car count increases and population increases, that another facility is needed. In terms of the concern about Amazon, well, using the Valvoline or whatever, it's an oil change facility, we don't contract with Amazon or anything like that, so we, the biggest car that we will be able to handle is an F two fifty. And those are pretty rare that we service those, so.
Thank you.
And like, reiterate too, I mean, the earliest hours of operation that they propose is eight AM, not, nothing before that.
Madam Chair, move we close the public hearing. Support.
It's been moved and supported? You don't need to vote, right? You don't? Need to vote?
Yes.
Yes, voice please. Okay, it's been moved and supported, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it, the public hearing is closed, thank you very much. Pleasure of the commissioners.
Madam Chair? Ready to make a motion?
Thank you.
I move that the planning commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit for a minor vehicle repair business, as requested by Jiffy Lube, as described in case number ESL two zero two four dash zero four for the following reasons, which are two, and which in follow-up conditions of approval, there's one. Support.
It's been moved and seconded? For the comments? It's okay.
Member Schweitzer?
Support.
Member Metta? Support. Ludry?
Support.
Kaczynski? Support. Elsinger?
Support.
Bradley?
Support.
McCall supports? Matt Proctor?
Support.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So the final vote for that will be on May sixth, I spoke earlier, it's May sixth will be the, the final vote on these, but yeah.
All right, thank you. Next over to business is the twenty twenty-three Planning Department Annual Report.
So I, the annual report, basically, this year, there wasn't, wasn't anything kind of above and beyond, it's just basically a list of all the, all the things we did last year. If, don't have a presentation made up, but if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them, or, or I can, I can bring it up and go through it in detail if you'd like, but I mean, it's more or less just, this year just ended up being just kind of a tally of all the things that went through the planning commission last year, with all the With all the, Gary, we had a couple of times, we didn't do a whole lot of above and beyond, sort of extra planning activities. So it's just kind of a standard. Like I said, year of just the votes we went through, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or. And then at first, we just need like a vote to just accept the, like, or accept it into the record.
Good.
Mr. McCowell.
You did get my feedback, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we made the changes on our end. Just the official document.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on this, do we?
You just need to accept it, just accept it, yeah. It's already been, the information was presented by Gary Bozek to the Township Board a couple of months ago. This is just the official Planning Commission submittal for.
So they only accept that you got to start all over again?
Yeah.
So any board of appeals, the last individual listed there is Ananda, is that supposed to be an M in there?
It's not, actually. I did, I did, that is not a typo, that her name is Ananda, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for looking at that. Yep.
I move to accept the. Planning Commission's twenty twenty-three Annual Report.
Support.
They're moving and supporting, okay. I opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the election of offers for twenty twenty-four.
Arnold, it stipulated he did not want to be.
Unfortunately, he is also not here to.
You know what happens when you don't show up.
Election day.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, I mean, we are up for elections. You know, Arnold has to be taken off, and it's really amongst you guys to, you know, step up and. We're going to run in a great meeting.
I'm muttering my way through, trust me.
Practice makes progress.
Three for three, as far as I'm concerned.
I want. Do we get working out of class money like the state of Michigan?
If we have positions that need to be filled, I'm willing to take whatever the board is in need of, so.
So is there anyone that wants to be chair specifically?
You have told.
I'd be willing to. Yeah.
I'll move up if that's the plan. Is that the progression?
That's typically how it has worked out.
Oh, you were quick, uh huh, thank you very much.
More than willing to step into the vice chair position.
All right.
Willing to do secretary again.
You guys are wonderful, we appreciate you.
Yep.
For flattering, get you almost in.
So what's our next step now to vote?
Yeah, just to pass the motion with stating that those will be the roles.
Anyone else want to step up?
I would like so.
Don't everybody rush at once?
We nominate Mayor Proctor, Hunt Proctor for. Chair. Mr. Kozinski for Vice Chair, Mr. McCowell for Secretary.
It's been moved, double support it?
They are making that quick off all year.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations. Do I get a car?
Yes.
I think she should.
And those appointments are effective when?
Next meeting.
Yeah, starting next meeting.
All right. And next on the agenda is public comment, there's no one here. Planning directors comment.
I think we need to do the board appointments as well, correct? For the.
For CIP.
That's right.
So, CIP?
I'll stay on.
Same.
Correct.
Okay.
If you meet during the last two weeks in June, I will not be available. Be out of town.
Okay, I don't remember that. You can be management still.
Bob is still going to be parliamentarian. And on the zoning.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, do we need to vote on this as well? Okay. Entertaining motion?
I move to retain the rest of the positions as they, as they are on the rest of the. Appointments, committees.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Planning Director comments?
I'd like to introduce new interim Planning Director, Peter Mensah.
Good evening. So, yeah, I've worked with this group before, you've seen me before, so I'm going to be stepping in as interim Planning Director. While Gary Heels figures out where, you know, path of his career from, from here. And just for a little background on myself, not that I need to present a resume necessarily, but I worked fifteen years with Meridian Township as the principal planner. I was the planning zone administrator and the interim planning director at City B Slanting for the last couple of years, and I've been here with Delta since last April, so just past the year. Pretty familiar with planning zoning issues and looking forward to working with this group. The other capacity I serve here at the Township is as the Community Economic Development Director. That's what you've mostly seen me as. Behind the scenes, I'll be working with Dave and Matt and certainly in front of the scenes as well here. Helping with projects and, you know, helping review and share comments, work with applicants, that kind of thing. Tonight, just really briefly, I wanted to provide, Rachel, I think I missed you. I have just a one pager that we, that I produce on a monthly basis with just kind of a snapshot of projects that are going on. I'll continue to hand those out at this meeting and provide some updates. I did not have the Herc rentals on there, so I'll add that for the next phase. So that's just a document I use to track kind of the comings and goings in the township. We have a lot of projects currently happening in Delta Township, a lot of projects in our site plan process. And that are coming down the pike. A couple I wanted to highlight are the McLaren Medical Clinic there at Nixon and West Saginaw. That project has received comments from our team. Site plan comments from our team, as you may remember, that was a consent judgment, so you did not see that project, I think we went over that last time. But it is, the site plan process is happening at the staff level. So there, we received comments from our different departments and conveyed all those to McLaren. And they'll make some edits to their site and it kind of a back, you know, kind of a back and forth between our staff and their team. Michigan CAT is proposing expansion, they'll be on your agenda, is that May sixth?
Thirteen.
May thirteen, so it's an expansion of the facility at Millet Highway. So you'll see that soon. I mentioned last week, or last, two weeks ago, the IBEW parking lot, so that was a project that started without any approvals. The township is aware of that situation, is working with IBEW to bring them back through the site plan process. The township recently gave final approval to the site plan for Midwest Press and Automation at two nine oh four Snow. So that's a project that had, you saw, I think, last fall. It's an expansion of that facility on Snow Road. They received some dollars from the, at the state level. And a commercial rehab exemption, tax exemption here at the township. So they'll be able to expand and the, the hope is that they'll be here in Delta for quite a long time. And then we're also reviewing the plant upgrades at BWL, what, the former Erickson Power Station, now the Delta Energy Plant on South Canal. So we'll continue to report out on these projects. If there are any questions for this group, I'm happy to field those, or maybe Dave and Matt might have answers for you.
Here, the facility that we approved last fall at, at Waverly. And Old Lansing Road.
It's the Pat Riley trucking?
Yes. I've seen on, on the, I've actually on Mount Hope. There's a for sale sign there. Is there an excess property there or?
Well, yeah, we're, we're currently working to ascertain the status of that project. We've heard a couple of different things, Mr. Alagora had heard from a real estate agent about possibly marketing it in a different manner. Contemplating a rezoning. So we're trying to ascertain whether or not they want to proceed with that Pat Riley trucking project or not. Don't have a straight answer on that, but we'll advise when we do.
All right.
So there has been questions about possibly other uses on the site, but as of now, nothing.
The, the engineering company is still under the impression that it's still going. They, they had a turnover and somebody else took over the file, but the, their, last I heard, they're still under the impression that it's going, but yeah, like they said, it's under. All right, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you say what you, I didn't hear the whole transition thing. You're the interim planning director now?
Yeah, so Gary Bozek has been the playing director here, well, I don't know how long he's been the director.
About five, about five years.
Five, five years, so, but Gary's been with the township for forty plus. So in the, so Gary has been away on medical leave, I don't think that's a, an unknown thing. So it, and he's been away at this point for about a month. Completely out of the office, he was kind of back in, in and out for a while. So in the meantime, while he's on medical leave, I'll be serving as the interim planning director.
Oh.
So I'll be filling Gary's role.
Okay.
You have two heads.
Yes.
The. The theater behind the Lansing Mall.
Yeah.
Is that business still going?
No. That one was only open for a couple of months, yeah, I think, I believe he moved to Lansing, I think.
And that pulled it too.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that building is completely empty.
The. West of Nixon Road where they have McLaren. The blood lab and behind Sophia's. There's a dental office there. Start with a beef berm. Something. The parking lot is absolutely horrible.
That's on Delta Township.
I was going to say that is outside of the township, correct?
Yeah. I think it's a neither.
Born ownership is, is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So the ownership is a borderline.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Peter, what's the status of the Delta crossings? The at-home building, that's.
That's a next question.
It's the talk of the.
Yeah, no, and it's, it's the talk in our department and then the township, most township staff as well. We are working to try to get that site cleaned up. It is, as this developer has proceeded, the promise that we, that was given to us really was as this Burlington site was. Began construction, that that construction team would mobilize to clean up that at-home site as well. That has not come to fruition as of yet, but we remain. Pursuing the developer to make that happen as, as soon as possible.
Because we were at a point where it had to come down and then, no, it's structurally okay, it'll stay. Then we had the August twenty-fourth windstorm.
Yeah.
Some of it came down, so I just wondered, you know, is that going to have to come down now?
But there are differing opinions on that, without getting into too much detail. Well, we had a third party look at that. The, I guess in the short term, that, that determination is being made, I think there's a, the developer wants to make a case that it could, that is structurally sound. We'll, we'll consider that. When it's presented to us, but in the meantime, the goal is to clean up the debris that fell off the, that is not part of that wall. Because it's spilling over into other, other areas.
So status quo?
Status quo for now, but there's an aggressive ta- tactic on our end to get that cleaned up as soon as possible. And certainly before any other phases of that project are in the application stage or proceed.
Have you heard anything from? At home, whether they still want to come somewhere in Delta?
No, I'm not able to, no, don't have any complete facts on that.
Okay, thank you.
Are they going to still have the daycare on Waverly Road by the monitor mat?
We're really hoping so, so that was, I thought that that project was moving a little faster than it has. I'm not sure what exactly that the delay has been in an application. I did talk to the owner of the property and their project team recently. And they said that they're still planning on submitting. There must just be a delay on their end, so the, the building is empty as of now, they had done some demo, some interior demo work in there. And planning, we're planning and, the, the assumption is, are still planning on submitting stuff to us for consideration. So I hope to, hope to have that for you soon.
I know this is outside the township, but that B two outlet or whatever that's in, was that only intended to be for the holidays?
Oh, I, I don't know, but just in my personal consumption of news, I thought it was intended to be a permanent store. And that is again, it's East and Lansing Township, but, so I, I don't know the whole story and why it closed, but I thought it was intended to be not just seasonal.
I was surprised for all that money for that sign and whatnot. Thank you.
Thanks.
Peter, have you heard anything from the Drain Commissioner's office on the detention ponds?
The, there will be facilitating the drain project that's proposed later this year. They are acquiring some properties in that drainage district. But we haven't, we are working with them on, or I guess they are working on a rollout of their proposal. But we are working with that team.
Okay.
To ensure that the information gets out to the public and that there's a process and some answers from our end and where we're directing people to answer. Ultimately, it's, you know, it's a drainage district project. But inevitably Township staff will, and residents will have questions, so we're working on answers to those questions and then kind of a system of how we're going to handle those. We're going to send people for more information.
Yeah, from my point of view, we're waiting for the next meeting. Public meeting, okay, and. The detention pond that's planned for the O'Rafferty School. That would be Robbins and Saginaw. Okay, now, the frontage on that. Property is going to be sold off separately, right, as a, some kind of a. Multi-use maybe?
Well, I know that that discussion, I know that that's a, a thought that's out there, I don't know the, the extent to which it's official. My, the township was interested in retaining some sort of, whether it's mixed use or commercial use along Saginaw. Our understanding is that there will be portions of, of that portion of the site that could be. Set aside for, for future development, that the drain work is happening on the north portion of the property. I don't have anything official to confirm that at this point. But I think that is considered as one of the goals of that project.
I just wondered if you guys heard anything more than.
I don't think that we have any more insight into it at this point. I will beef up my background on that and give you more information and maybe we'll know more at your next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone, I'm looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you, we're looking forward to it. Any commissioners comments? Do you know comments, entertain the motion for adjournment?
I move with adjournment.
They're moved.
Work.
And supported, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right.
Congratulations. It was real.
I want a company credit card.
One thing we usually do.